Gretkin.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Shaner.
Here.
Gott.
Here. Please stand for a moment of silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Interview for the Environmental Advisory Board, Alex Johnson. Alex, you want to come to the microphone and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve? Alex, are you in the house? Not seeing Alex, we'll go to items three through thirteen D, which constitute a consent agenda that consider the items passed unanimously unless a separate roll call votes requested by a city council member. Any person wishing to speak on an agenda item may come to the podium at the time the item is being discussed. Any person wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at the end of the regular meeting during citizen concerns. And remember that all speakers must state their name and address for the record and limit your remarks to three minutes. I'll move that. Second. Three is a reading of the City Council minutes of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Four is a resolution rejecting the bid for the Rivers Landing Elevators Upgrade Project. Five is a resolution authorizing payment to Bainbridge Construction for the Leach Avenue Reconstruction Project. Six is a resolution amending the position classification manual by changing the driver's license requirement to coincide with the city residency requirement.
Hey, Mayor, can I hop back up to four, Monette? Can I? I actually don't have a question about the elevators and I could just shoot you an email, but hey, here you are. Can you update me where we are on the bidding of the cameras? I know I had spoke with you about that and then I saw this one. Can you?
Actually, we had a meeting about three weeks ago with Thompson Electric and at that point in time, we had gone through one of the ramps and they decided we didn't have all of the staff they needed there. So we just met last Thursday. So they're putting together a bid right now.
Okay, perfect. I just get asked about that periodically and I just wanted to know.
It's in the works.
That for all the ramps, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Alex Johnson came in. Come on up to the microphone, Alex, and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the Environmental Services or Environmental Advisory Board.
The mayor runs a tight ship, so if you're not here at four, I guess we missed you. So I'm glad you made it.
But go ahead.
So what was the question?
Why do you want to serve on the Environmental Advisory Committee?
Well, due to my experience that I've had in my life, in my professional career, and also my passion for the environment, I've been to many cities and I see many inconsistencies here that, to me, there's really no excuse for. So by saying, you know, know your audience, Alex, you don't know who you're dealing with, it doesn't matter. The environment isn't an issue that should be wrapped up in politics on either side. Seeing it by the public sort of treated as more of a liberal issue, which puts a bad taste in the conservatives' mouth, doesn't sit well with me because everybody's a human being regardless. So that's sort of my standpoint on it. And dealing with the public, I feel that I would be very apt to do that. I have a federal career working for the Park Service when I'm not a house painter. And, you know, I led these cave tours and that was a group of sixteen people of any given background at any given time that I had to communicate geology to. So I feel like if I can do that, I can do anything.
Okay. Questions? Thanks for making the application.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I want to say that I really thought your passion in that statement and I appreciate that. You're right. It shouldn't be political. It shouldn't be liberal or conservative. It should be looked at as concerning the planet and our earth. So, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I feel as though the city can do more and so there's no excuse not to. Budget issue, anything like that, it doesn't matter.
Feel like you'll have some solutions to?
Absolutely.
Help with the problems that you're seeing? Okay.
Alex, my, sorry, were you done? You good, Julie? Sorry. My only question was, obviously, you have great experience or extensive background in that. Do you have any experience working on any different boards and commissions, whether it was with your employment or otherwise? Not necessarily boards or cities, but any nonprofits or anything like that?
You know, I feel like I'm forgetting something that I've done, so I'll just go ahead and say no. But I feel like I'm forgetting, so.
Well, you have a background and a passion for this, so I'm not discounting that. I just wondered as far as the boards and commission side of things.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, dealing with the federal government and doing that whole route, I mean, that's an entire different world of formalities. So as far as serving on boards, if I can deal with, you know, federal formalities, I think I can do anything.
Sounds good.
Alex, I'm curious, what specifically disappoints you about our parks, gardens? You put that in your application, our recreational trails. What do you see that disappoints you?
Well, I guess namely, the first thing that sort of rung the bell is seeing brand new garbage cans delivered to the skate park. Now, ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of the garbage that's there is plastic. And so when I hear that, oh, we don't, the city doesn't have the contract because they have to talk to this or that, like Gil Halling or whoever you guys use, still, that's unexcusable to me. Get the contract. Get the manpower. It's not an excuse. So, and that's just at the skate park. So all the other parks, you know, zoom out, look at that from the satellite, all over the city.
All are the same.
Yeah. So if it's a city park, why not? Because seeing the recycling bins downtown is cute, but seeing that actually not downtown where, you know, it's perhaps has been funding going through to beautify this area, the whole city needs to be treated like downtown.
Thank you.
Well, Alex, I'll share just a little bit of optimism with you, okay? So one of the last meetings that we were at, I was sharing my concern with our, who was it? I forget if it was Wayshor, if it was Parks and Rec. Yeah, because I think it might have been Parks and Rec Director. And all of our little leagues, we were talking about renewing their contracts and the amount of money that we were spending with them and partnering on that program. And I said, you know those concession stands? All they do is sell bottled pop and bottled water and cans and everything like that. I said they should really recycle those and then use that money to reinvest in their programs. And he informed me that now they all have a recycling container at those ballparks. So don't be too down, you know? We can change and be optimistic about our future, but it takes people with ideas coming forward and talking about those. So I appreciate you making the application.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. You know, I've seen it work in other cities and if Portland, Oregon can, a city of that size can do recycling every week and garbage every two weeks, why not Sioux City? And if it's, the people aren't going to take it well, the people need to take it well regardless, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, we'll go to seven actions relating to grants. A is a resolution authorizing Parks and Recs to accept a Gilcrest Foundation grant to support the Chris Larson Park Riverfront Development Project. B is a resolution authorizing the airport to apply for funds under the American Rescue Plan Act to provide economic relief to the airport operations. C is a resolution authorizing the airport to apply for funds under the American Rescue Plan to provide economic relief to airport concessions. D is a resolution approving an inter-local agreement with Woodbury County to apply for JAG program funds for the police department. Eight are civil penalties and suspensions. A is a resolution authorizing a five hundred dollar penalty against Sam's Mini Mart for violation of the beer, wine, and liquor laws. B is a resolution assessing a fifteen hundred dollar penalty and a sixty day suspension of the liquor permit issued to the Transit General Store for violation of the beer, wine, and liquor laws. Anyone to be heard on that?
Okay.
Mayor, I need to abstain on eight B, Transit General Store for Conflict of Interest.
Nine are actions relating to bonds. A is a motion approving a tax exemption certificate in connection with the water revenue capital loan note. B is a resolution authorizing a loan and a disbursement agreement with the Iowa Finance Authority and authorizing payment of the water revenue capital loan note. Ten are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution granting a permit to fiber company and underground cable in the area of Al Haynes Drive and Expedition Court. B is a resolution approving a contract to Bainbridge Construction for the Andrew Avenue Paving and Utilities Improvement Project. C is a resolution approving a three month lease extension with Krabs Car Rental for the building at sixty-one fifteen Mitchell Street at the airport. D is a motion approving the award of the Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center Offsite Improvements Project to the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors to Sioux City Engineering Company. Anyone to be heard on that? You understand, we're not doing the asphalt overlay. We're not agreeing to that, right? Okay. E is knife.
Yes.
Because I sit on the authority board, I'll abstain on that item.
Okay. E is Knife River Midwest. One is a resolution approving change order number seven to the contract with Knife River Midwest for the runway seventeen thirty-five reconstruction project at the airport. Two is a resolution approving a change order number one to the contract with Knife River Midwest for the taxiway C-South reconstruction project at the airport. Eleven's purchasing. A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to utility equipment for manhole frames and lids. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Timberline GSE for a portable passenger boarding ramp at the airport. Twelve are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list come forward if you have questions. I do have a question on B, Mike, eleven B. Is this going to be stored inside until it needs to be used or is it just going to sit out on the?
Mike Coletta, this is the city manager. The plan would be to have it outside so it's readily available between the two jet bridges.
Okay, well, when they break down, it's normally winter time, so I hope you keep it kind of cleaned off at least.
Yep, that's the plan.
When you need it, so.
Very good.
Twelve for application for beer liquor license. See the list come forward if you have any question. Thirteen receipt of minutes. See the list come forward if you have any question. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Passes five zero unless otherwise noted as we went through the items. Recommendations of P&amp;Z. Fourteen is a hearing and ordinance rezoning attractive land north of twenty-six hundred Glen Ellen Road. The petitioner is BMT Incorporated. P&amp;Z recommends approval of this item. I'll move the item. Second. The hearing's now open.
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. Ryan Ross was not able to attend the meeting today. I will just present the P&amp;Z vote for both item fourteen and fifteen. They're both related, the rezoning, as well as the accompanying final plat for a seven lot subdivision on Glen Ellen Road titled Royal Highlands Fifth Edition. The vote on both items was four zero one by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mr. Saff not here today?
I don't believe so.
Pass, I guess.
Must be.
Anyone else to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Anybody opposed, waiting to say a story rule? I'll move that. Second.
Gretkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Gott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
I'll move second and third. Passes five zero. Fifteen's resolution approving the final plat of Royal Highlands petitioner, BMT Inc. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that. Second. Passes five zero. Sixteen's a hearing and resolution approving a proposal to sell property and authorizing, indeed, the property at seventeen oh-two George Street. Petitioners DeBron, Nancy L. Revocable Trust. Motion is requested to delete this item. I'll move that. Second.
Can vote electronically on this one.
Passes five zero. Seventeen's a resolution proposing to sell property and rescinding resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero six four six, property at seventeen oh-two George Street. The petitioner is Nancy L. Bron, trustee of the Nancy L. Bron Revocable Trust. I'll move that.
Second.
Are we deleting this item?
No.
I was gonna say.
I think it's because the names were wrong.
We deleted the first one. That's what voted on the last one.
Gotcha.
Sixteen was the deletion.
Isn't that right? The name's wrong, so we had to start over.
Because it's Nancy L. Bron and Bron Nancy L.
No, I saw that, but the city deed I had in front of me was the incorrect one. And that was just from our homework last week.
Well, there won't be.
I thought I got an email on that this morning.
Because the item was scheduled today, you received a copy of the item that was deleted. Item number sixteen had the homework, which would have included the incorrect deed.
It'll have to come back.
It'll come back again in a couple of weeks and it will have the deed to the correct individual.
All right. Thank you. I thought a real estate guru such as yourself would have figured that out, but.
Passes five zero. Eighteen's a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Oracle Aviation for the lease of the land in the Donner Park Urban Renewal and Authorizing Development and Lease Agreements for Property at twenty-four oh-three Aviation Boulevard. I'll move that. Second. Public hearing is now open.
Mayor and council, this item on here, staff is recommending to accept the proposal from Oracle Development. It's been kind of a long process that we went down this path to discuss development. A lot of organizations and entities have come together to put this proposal before you. Dave Poole is here from Oracle Aviation today as well. We do also have Hawthorne Aviation as well. I think they're going to have a presentation also on requested different action for you to consider at the same time. The entities have come together, obviously, the city, but economic development has secured a grant through the federal government, Oracle Aviation themselves, Morningside University. Takes a lot of entities to pull together a proposal this size and we think will be successful on the airfield to promote the airport, promote operations, improve operations, and make us self-sustaining in the long term. Maybe I'll invite Dave Poole up, maybe if you want to say a few words upon Oracle's behalf, Dave?
I just wanted to say too, as you're walking up, I'm very passionate about the development of our airport and the continuation of this. I'm excited about this conversation. But due to my employment at Morningside University, I just wanted to set the ground rules and let everyone know that I will be abstaining from both questions. I don't want to appear that I'm directing in any way, as well as the vote today. So just before you get started, I just want to let you know.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, my name's Dave Poole. I'm the general manager of Oracle Aviation. Address, I believe you have on file, but it's one-two-nine-one-six Millard Airport Plaza, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-three-seven. Again, just wanted to say, to kind of echo last month's comments, we appreciate the opportunity to come to Sioux City and become an aviation asset here in Siouxland. And I know that you all have seen various parts of the proposal or our proposed operation over the last several months, going well back into twenty twenty. And just happy to answer any questions if anybody has one. Otherwise, I can step back and let the agenda move forward.
Well, I want to make sure that I understand this right. I didn't read the Hawthorns, so I'll be asking them the same question. You want to partner, you're actually partnering with Morningside?
Yes, sir. That's our plan.
And they're going to furnish classroom-type classes and you're going to furnish the planes so that young people can get their pilot's license?
That's correct. Similar to our training partnership with University of Nebraska at Omaha at our Millard location, we would be the flight training provider for a Part One Forty-One Flight School that would be operating with Morningside University as well as independent students. Morningside, obviously, is a very large part of this program, but we will be training students that come in off the street as well. This is not exclusive to Morningside. But yes, we would be offering the flight training component of a bachelor's degree program in professional aviation that Morningside would be offering.
And how many students would you project in year two of this project would you have when you're up and running?
Year two, a very conservative estimate. I would like to see twenty to twenty-five, maybe thirty students enrolled.
And if you had twenty-five students, how many touch and goes a year would that be roughly? How many airport contacts would that be, do you think?
Assuming that, say, in a, typically how these programs work, year one, a student tries to obtain their private pilot's license. Year two would be their instrument ticket. Year three, commercial. Year four, a combination of certified flight instructor and multi-engine rating. There would be, just as a simple number, at a minimum, it's forty hours of flight time to obtain a private pilot's license. The national average is well over sixty-five or seventy hours. You could have five to eight plus operations per hour flown during that time. So it would be looking at several hundred operations per student each year with that program growing substantially as we move on. Like I said, at UNO, for instance, we've got about two hundred and twenty, I believe, students, two hundred and fifty students in the program. I just, I expect things to be conservatively growing and this building from scratch, it's going to take a little longer. And again, keeping in mind also, that's just the Morningside component of it. We have about a hundred and twenty active students in our flight school in Omaha overall. We did fourteen thousand hours of flight instruction last year in COVID twenty twenty. So each one of those hours, again, we could have a substantial amount of airport operations, which certainly helps the traffic count here at Sioux City.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for you, please. The substantial completion date is December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, correct, for the improvements for the hangar building? Did I read that correctly?
Yep.
Okay. And then the flight school would be completed by December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three?
I believe that's the flight school with Morningside's involvement. Their first cohort would be enrolled the fall semester of twenty twenty-three. Our intent, though, is as soon as the facility is open, we will have flight training on day one. In fact, as part of the lease agreement that we've been working on with the city, the alert hangars are part of that proposal. We would like to, if possible, base aircraft and start this process much earlier than that, pretty much as soon as we can get that lease secured and start running operations within the coming months, if possible.
And I think those are no later than?
Yes, sir.
Dates, correct? Am I reading that correctly? The other thing I want to confirm with you is when I reviewed the lease, it does not allow for any assignments to third parties. Now, the city can consent to an assignment if they wish, but otherwise, there's no assignment of those documents. Is that your understanding?
That is my understanding, with the exception that for, for instance, hangar rental, I believe things can be assigned up to just shy of one year. Is that correct? That's correct, yeah. Which is pretty typical in the hangar world, that tenants would be paying a monthly hangar fee to store aircraft with us. And we would obviously like that to be a much longer-term operation than that, but typically, that would be on a slightly less-than-annual basis to match our lease.
The lease will be a twenty-year term?
Yes, sir, with two ten-year options following.
Correct. Yeah, that's what I have too. Okay, thank you. That's all for right now. Other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
The partnership that you formed with Morningside now, is there portion of the partnership where the student will result in their BS, in their Bachelor of Science degree?
Yes, that's correct. Upon completion of their academic portion and the flight training portion, they will receive a Bachelor's of Science in professional flight or professional aviation. And then there is an additional degree field that will likely be added for aviation management administration to follow. But really, the focal point here specifically related to the airport would be to spool up this flight operation and help the traffic count first.
That was going to be part of my question. So Oracle's side of it, I was wondering if you were going to offer something like aviation management or a business management or something like that that goes along with the actual, you know, flight school, the pilot training?
Yes, we would be working with Morningside on that as well, offering services from kind of a professional and somewhat of an expert capacity, similar again to what we do at UNO in Omaha, where we go in and help lecture on FBO operations, airport operations, things of that nature. I would assume that a fair amount of our instructors may be co-employed as faculty or staff with Morningside. That helps handle the FAA administration of a program like this as well.
Anyone else to be heard?
Just to sum up, I guess, we think this is an important step in the evolution and growth of the airport. Oracle has a great track record of success in Miller, down in Omaha, and Morningside's a great partner. The financial plan works with a long-term twenty-year lease. We also have a one million dollar, as you know, one million dollar federal EDA grant. We have a good site plan and multiple benefits, as has been discussed here in terms of increased airport activity to support the long-term growth of the airport, increased economic activity, both at the airport and in the area, and support the air guard and the long-term future of the tower and the whole airport. So, just sums it up pretty good.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Afternoon. My name's Jack Tagley, President of Hawthorne. Address is four-four-zero-five Mill Road, Ronkonkoma, New York, one-one-seven-seven-nine. Still have a hard time saying Ronkonkoma.
Yeah. Good afternoon.
Yeah, thank you. I did have a presentat-, oh. Yes, I'm ready, please.
Come in.
Can I switch?
Yep.
I'm here with Hawthorne today and we are, I am asking this team body, if you consider deferring on this proposed agenda item, we would like an opportunity to have your, to have you direct your staff to work with us to help provide an alternative that would be as equally effective, but perhaps as low as five million dollars less cost to the taxpayers. So the time required to get that done, we would greatly appreciate deferring on this item right now. We don't disagree with any of the issues. We know that the guard is an important component of this airport. We know that there are pilot shortages, mechanic shortages, just technical shortages all around the industry. I've been doing this for fifty years now. I've been told that there was going to be a pilot shortage. For the first time in my life, we have a pilot shortage. We have a plane shortage. We have a mechanic shortage. I am committed to fixing that. Aviation's been very good to me. I've been very fortunate to have this as my chosen profession. I would like to leave it better than I found it, and right now, this is one of our biggest, one of our biggest issues. Flight operations, can't disagree. We need to increase flight operations. We're working to do that internally. I think there are things that we can do as an FBO that, quite honestly, we didn't do in the past. I think that we've been candid in prior meetings on some of our shortcomings, but I won't make that mistake twice. I give you my word. The proposed facility, been around, I've been around flight schools a long time. Galvin Flying Service in Seattle was one of the oldest flight schools in the country. And we had anywhere from three hundred and fifty to five hundred students. It's really hard to gauge how many students you have because they get it in fits and starts. They really want to fly and then they'll either run out of money or they want to play baseball or, you know, who knows what drives it, but it's not a consistent student body. But for that level, we had about a four thousand square foot facility. And in that facility, And in that facility, we had all of the administrative briefing, training rooms. We even had two full-motion simulators that, quite honestly, operated as much as the airplanes. So the size of the facility is one of those things that we would like to be able to discuss with your staff. Again, that's why we're asking for the deferral. As far as the proposed facility, we do have a proposed facility. And I think that it could almost have been turned around to an apples-and-oranges type of submission. And we didn't have a lot of time to marry this up, but we have a space that we had offered to the city. It's under our, the master leasehold, that could be retrofitted and turned into an ideal flight school for Morningside or any Morningside and their partners, whoever it may be. We had proposed doing it as a lease-back type of arrangement, which is hard to put down in paper in a, you know, what is the dollar-for-dollar exchange? We did not want to assume any nature of control because of a conflict of interest that may, a perception of conflict of interest. So we just were offering it as part of our parcel for this program. I still believe that this is the best location for the program. It's, it would support it. It would support the students. It would support the school. And it would really help the airport. We have all the ramp in front of it. We have space. We spaced out twenty airplanes. We could double that space, forty airplanes, whatever. A forty aircraft flight school would be relatively large and something to write home about. But we're willing to work with the city and give the city what Morningside needs to make this program work. It's in our best interest. We need pilots. I'm looking for fifteen pilots in our system right now, and I don't have a single resume that I can fill those jobs with. We really need this to work. Again, as far as the rent and how we would get there and how we would fuel it, we've offered fuel at cost. We've, we can make this work. We just need time in order to have that discussion to make it work. And again, that's what I'm asking for, is the time, you know, as much as anything. We are committed to, we support at-youth, at-youth flight programs in other cities. I believe that we've made the commitment that we would do the same here at whatever level. Our principles don't shy away from getting people engaged in aviation. So if there's something that we haven't done that is more inclusive and brings more people to aviation, tell us and we'll do it. I mean, I, I am engaged in this. And again, all we need to make this a little better proposal is a deferral, some direction to work with the staff, and a little bit of time. And I believe we'll have a much better project at the end of this pipeline.
But basically, you're only going to offer this site up if Oracle is limited to a flight school with Morningside? Is that what you're saying, or can they do other operations?
Yes, that's what I would say. I think that we do the other options. We can do the other options. They do what they do well. I know what I can do well, and I can do that well.
But that might, I'm guessing, be a deal breaker for them. And so then we have nothing.
Well, I think that what we have right now is a, an opportunity to discuss what would and wouldn't work. Because up until now, we've really been, the idea of them operating an FBO has been out of the question. We haven't had a chance to discuss that. And whether that's the Part thirteen or, you know, whatever reasoning it is, it's been somewhat limited. I'm asking to let us have some discussion. Give us an opportunity to work amongst ourselves to come up with an option that is the best option for the city and the taxpayers.
Well, I mean, we can argue about what's the best option for the taxpayer, but that's an unknown. If this flight school becomes abundantly successful, you don't know that this is in the best interest of, your proposal's in the best interest of the taxpayer. You can't tell me that because I don't know.
But that, but doesn't, sir, doesn't that cut both ways? The FBO--
If I would have finished, I would, if you'd let me finish, I would have said that. Right now, we don't have an idea what the best proposal is. And no disrespect, I've told you this privately, you have not necessarily been a great partner with us down there.
I have shared, I agree. But I have also shared that I'm committed, and you can talk to counterparts where I have been engaged. I'm a man of my word. I do what I say.
I don't doubt that. Unfortunately, it took this to, it took this to get you guys' attention, unfortunately. That's the sad part for me, so, but--
And I apologize. I've been employed here for seven months. I should have been here seven months ago. That's, that is my mistake.
Any other questions?
Has Hawthorne been in the aviation--
Oh, forever.
--school business forever? Out of flight school?
Oh, I don't know.
Flight school?
We have had flight schools in the past. Flight schools are not the easiest. We operated several times. Hawthorne is a relatively old, one of the oldest FBOs in the country. As you can imagine, it's gone through some ownership changes. And flight schools, they came and went. Currently, we don't. It's not, it's hard. It is a hard business. I give it to Oracle, I really do. I mean, it's not, not something that you would just want to jump right into.
How long's it been since you had a flight school?
Hawthorne?
Yes.
Ten years.
Ten years.
I left, no, in Seattle, I left four years ago with Galvin, and that's the last. And to be honest, that was a hard one. We were, we were connected with the University of Washington, South Seattle Community College, Green River Community College. The, even with as much in what we would like to think is an aviation city, it was a hard nut to crack. We did what we could. It's still going, but right now, the simulators are doing the lion's share of the work up there.
What would make it easier in Sioux City?
You know what? I think that's a, that's a good question. I think what makes it easier in Sioux City makes it easier in the entire country. We have missed an opportunity as an industry. Personal opinion, not fact. We've missed an opportunity in the industry to get together. And we've focused on, oh, jeez, we're, you know, quarter-to-quarter isn't going to be bad. Oh, COVID's going to get us. Oh, there's always been some, some big ugly bear out there that was going to get us. We have not focused on getting the younger kids into the, across the fence. We have always, I have, right now, I have ten summer interns in New York. Just hopefully, a portion of those, and, you know, they're just sweeping hangar floors and doing trash and going for rides occasionally. We don't do that. And some of us do, but not all of us do. And we don't, we surely don't do it as an industry. NBAA, NATA, we shy away from it. It's all, oh, shiny new. Shiny new doesn't exist without grungy with a broom in your hand. My opinion. Could it be fixed? Yes, it could. We'd better fix it.
Thank you. I have a few questions, if I may?
Yes, sir.
What would be your timeframe? I think in your proposal, you had the refurbishing project of the hangar, which is going to be a little over two million dollars. What would be the timeframe leading that?
So I have some experience with this. In Seattle, we had a project that was a building almost identical to this at the Clay Lacy FBO. Rather than rebuild, we reskinned and did the entire thing. And we were nine months from start to finish. One of our biggest challenges was getting this, we wanted the siding with the same angles and same look. And getting that angle delivered, production was a little bit of a problem for us. Permitting was much easier than, than new. The facility was in pretty good shape. So nine months, we were, from the time we started till the time we were out.
Thank you for that. And then you mentioned the city master lease in your presentation today during the hearing, plus the, in the written materials. And I checked on, with staff on the term. The term ends December thirty-one, twenty thirty-four. Is that your understanding?
Yes.
Do you know what the rental amount is on that city master lease?
I don't. I know that, that we're, I know the monthly amount. So you caught me at what I should know. I know that we pay, no.
The reason, and the reason I think you know, I mean, the reason why I'm asking is because that's part of the overall package that you presented, that it would coincide with the city master lease, and there wouldn't be any rental payments paid to the city, nor rental payments from the city paid to--
And there was a reason why we did that, a reason why I did that. I, there was a question as to how could we do it? And this was, this was a perfect example of having to make a decision on the fly without a lot of thinking, because we were given two options. You know, one was hog, bifurcate the lease and just, you know, give it back. Or we could, you know, hog it out and come in with a zero net sum. Let the city decide what, what it was that Morningside could handle as a program. That's not something that I knew enough about to make an educated guess on. So for me, it just seemed like all of the technical expertise on what Morningside could pay in terms of rent and how that would go, that had already been discussed at a much finer detail than I'm able to speak to. So it was easier just to hog it out, let the city deal with it. And I believe we even said that we'll negotiate that if this is something that works. It, we never got past that.
I think you were talking, and just correct me if I'm wrong, but I, because I'm trying to understand your proposal that's been submitted, that the city could, could or can sublease it to Morningside University?
Absolutely, absolutely. Our intention was let the city do with it what the city wants. It's our intention to help the city as much as possible. Now, if it gets down to pumping gas out of there, that would be an issue. But I don't think that would be an issue because we would give it to you at cost anyway, which is easably, that's an auditable transaction that I'm comfortable with. But that was the intent, was to leave as much flexibility for the city as possible.
Thank, thank you for that. And then another matter that was in your written materials, the feasibility of the proposed development. There was a point that was made that, and rightfully so, you're going to, you're going to advocate for Hawthorne, saying the proposal's superior. That, that's fair. But there's a statement in here that I was just a little bit concerned about, that your proposal ensures compliance with the FAA grant assurances. And I'm wondering what you were thinking there or what you might be alluding to with, I mean, I want to make sure our city is full compliance with the FAA grant assurances.
Agreed. And it's no secret that we filed a Part thirteen, which stopped a lot of conversations. I think that while it was viewed as litigation rather than regulatory, it did, in retrospect, I don't think that was a wise choice on my part. I think it stopped some of the conversations that we might have otherwise had just passing in the hall. But I also, what it did was, you know, we do have FOIA requests and, you know, there's all of the documents that have come in because we, it isn't coming on me to try and understand where we're at. And I'm trying to catch up on what appears is a year's worth of conversation and planning in just a few weeks. And to take in as much of this as possible, we've gone through and received some of that FOIA information. And we believe, I believe, that there could be, the city could have some of their grant assurances at risk under the proposed policy as it stands now.
I see. So, so where you ensure compliance with the FAA grant assurance, you're basically saying then that there could be some at-risk on the grant by the city with the proposal from Oracle?
Couple of two things.
I'm just trying to clarify.
Two things, actually.
Okay, thank you.
The first was, as we go down that, the Part thirteen goes away because we're, at a point, we're negotiating, that, that component goes away because we've gone towards a mechanism, a project that works, that fits the needs and is economical. So that's comforting. We can pull that Part thirteen back out. So that's no longer part of the discussion. Now, if the discussion carries on, then I can't say that if it goes towards the new FBO development. Because that's, it's just, it's that level of trust that once you get into a negotiation, you can say, okay, this is no longer the case. We can pull the Part thirteen. And I don't want it to sound like it's a threat. It's not, it's not intended to be, it's not my style at all. It's just, I don't know how else to put it.
Well, maybe there's some comment from the city attorney's office on, on that as well. It was just, it was something that I had caught in the review. I did review all of your materials, okay? So, and I, and I appreciate your being here for the hearing.
And, and I, I thought about going over page by page, but I assumed that this would be much more valuable than a regurgitation of what you've already read.
Oh, so you're, so you have further slides that are what we had--
You have everything that we have-- You have everything that we have. I, I would be just fine not.
Okay.
You are, I'll, I'm here to do what you guys want.
Amber, I have a question now, then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If, I'm assuming the Part 13, I have, whatever that means, is the complaint that's been filed.
Correct.
Would, would mean that if they're successful, we can never have two fixed base operators on an airport. Is that?
I'm gonna let Dan Reimer address any of the FAA concerns. He's the city's counsel that is dealing with Part 13 complaint. And I don't believe that you've met him, so now's the time to introduce him. Dan, if you want to go ahead and step to the microphone.
Because if that's the case, then all this discussion is for nothing.
I can answer that for you.
What's that?
That's not the case.
Okay, I would hope not. That, that's what would bother me, if that's the case. Go ahead.
Name and address, please.
Mayor members of council, Dan Reimer, R-E-I-M-E-R. I am an airport attorney based in Denver, Colorado, at 2824 Elmira in Denver, 80238. And as Amber mentioned, I've been retained by the city attorney's office to serve as special counsel. I have been, for the last 20-plus years, working exclusively as an airport attorney for airports around the United States, including five years managing the law department at Denver International Airport, and was brought in this spring to help in responding to what was referred to as the Part 13, which is another way of saying an informal complaint that has been filed with the city's regulator, the Federal Aviation Administration. So, I agree. It is not the case that the city is barred from having multiple FBOs.
Okay.
The law since around 1938 has been that airport operators cannot grant monopolies to engage in commercial aeronautical activities at airports. So, there is no scenario in which you could grant to Hawthorne, or Oracle, or any business that operates to be the only FBO, only fuel provider, only flight school, only anything.
Okay.
So, that's the first answer to your question. I, I think Amber asked me to come up, though, to talk a little bit about this issue of whether or not there is any risk to the city in accepting the proposal that is before you tonight and approving and executing the development and lease agreement. As the Hawthorne representative said, they have filed an informal complaint with the FAA. The city has responded to that complaint. We have not yet received a determination from the FAA. But it is my view that there is no risk presented by the development agreement and the lease agreement. The, the Part 13 informal complaint raised several questions about the project that's now before you. That was filed several months ago, before the lease agreement had been negotiated. Several of the questions that were presented in that informal complaint have already been answered. Is your board of trustees participating in this process? Yes, they have. Is the lease agreement subordinated to federal law and these grant assurances? Now, we have a lease agreement. We can see that it has that protection and that provision in it. Is the project consistent with the airport layout plan? And we know that it is. And as a matter of airport planning, it is something that, that makes sense and will be reflected on your airport layout plan. So, many of those questions that were presented have already been answered in the affirmative. So, there's nothing left there really to discuss. The essential allegation that Hawthorne has made in that complaint is that the city is discriminating against Hawthorne by providing certain benefits, subsidies, incentives to Oracle and its partner, Morningside, that were not made available to Hawthorne when it became the asseny of the FBO at the airport. I can go through in detail, if you're interested, why I think that's wrong as a legal matter. But I think at the broadest level, I would just make two points. Number one, some of the benefits that are reflected in the package are benefits that are being provided not by the city, but the city's partners. The city is only responsible for what it does as the sponsor of the airport and the, the entity that contracts with the FAA. The EDA grant, the contributions from Sioux Land Initiative, the other partners who are involved in here, don't reflect on the city, and the city has no responsibility for what others may be contributing to this proposal and this project. So, that's point one. This idea that all of these benefits are being loaded onto the Oracle project, but were not made available to Hawthorne is just, that's, that's not true as a practical matter because of your partnership. And two, I would just say at a very high level, that these grant assurances don't operate in the way that Hawthorne has been, has presented to the FAA. And I'm confident that the FAA will say that in its determination. There is a presumption that you have to make everything equal for everyone, and that you can only do for Oracle what was done for Hawthorne, or maybe Hawthorne's predecessors in, in Jetson. And that's not the way that these, that these grant assurances function. There are distinctions that you can make. That was then, this is now. Time has passed. The facilities are different. The operation is different. Hawthorne is an FBO. Oracle has come before you to talk about a flight school. You have an obligation to avoid what's called unjust economic discrimination against similarly situated entities. And that's not what you have in front of you. The proposal is different from the lease agreement with Hawthorne, but that is, as a matter of federal law, perfectly permissible, happens at airports across the country, and there's nothing about what you have in front of you in terms of the development and the lease agreement that is inconsistent with your contractual obligations to the federal government.
Thank you. That's, that's helpful. I, I want to follow up with a question on that, if I may. So, you've reviewed both the development agreement and the lease?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And just to make it clear, kind, to follow up a little bit on what the mayor was saying. So, if we had in the lease or the development agreement that they could not, we could not have another FBO, that we're gonna have one exclusively, that's what we cannot say. But by the same token, can we say in the lease, you must have a flight school, or you must develop a flight school? Or does that fall in the same type of category?
The, the first part I certainly agree with. Federal law, again, for, you know, close to a century, has prohibited you from saying, you are the only flight school, you are the only FBO. So, that is certainly true. You cannot grant a monopoly to engage in commercial aeronautical activity at this airport. To say someone must do, provide a particular product or service, that can be a part of your, of your contractual arrangement with the tenant, and it can be part of your minimum standards. If you think certain services should be bundled in the best interests of the customer, if you think that certain standards should be satisfied, you can certainly do that in the exercise of your, your ownership over the airport.
But the other side of the coin, if Hawthorne, let's say Oracle comes and starts a flight school. If Hawthorne decides to start a flight school, there's nothing we're going to be able to do about that. God bless them, they can do that if they want.
Which I would, I would say, correct. And I would say, there's nothing that if you approve and execute the development agreement and the lease that's before you, that would preclude, they would need a different partner, but that would preclude Hawthorne from proceeding as has been presented to you to refurbish the existing building and operate a flight school. There are many different kinds of flight schools, as the technical experts have indicated to you already. And there's nothing that would preclude Hawthorne from, from moving forward with a flight school of its own.
Well, I appreciate your help on getting that at least legally, with legally, getting it straightened out, because I did have concern about some of this, some of the language that was being used. So, thank you for your input on that.
Not to try and try this in court, but the, the FAA does look askew to economic support of one entity over another. And they have in the past, they do currently. So, I think it's a, a little disingenuous to represent that this is a done deal when we don't feel that it is.
That's why we all get hired.
I, I, I know. And FOIA.
I won't go into what, think about that. We're gonna let that go today.
Don't get in there and start it on that page. Was there anything else you wanted to add to the hearing?
No, sir.
I, I appreciate your answers that you presented to us today.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you coming.
Anything, anyone else?
No, thank you.
Anyone else be heard? Well, kind of a tough one for me, because I don't necessarily want to prolong this and lose an opportunity here. And the other side of the coin is, I think this is headed for litigation, so the sooner my vote is, the sooner we get to that litigation, the better off we're gonna be, and we'll have an answer. So, I'm gonna, well, I won't tell you how I'm gonna vote, I'm just gonna vote. The hearing is closed. Hearing and resolution, accepting the proposal of Oracle Aviation for the lease of land in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area and authorizing the development lease agreements for property at 2403 Aviation Boulevard. It passes 4-0 to 1, Mr. Waters abstained. Nineteen, a resolution's authorizing a 90-day delay of demolition of property at 1803 South Cedar Street. I'll move that second. You got the bond and everything, Darrell? Are you here? Yeah. Where you'll have the bond, right?
I can have the bond. I have the bond and all the other required documentation for this project.
Okay, thank you.
Staff would support it.
Same for the next one, right?
Same for the next one as well, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Headed, $10,000 bond?
$2,000.
Okay, thank you. It didn't come up. I'm assuming it's 5-0. Hmm? Oh, okay. Passes 5-0, 20 is a resolution authorizing a 90-day delay in demolition property at 2203 South Wollander Street. I'll move that second. Passes 5-0, 21 is a resolution approving the final plot of the residence, the residence at Elk Creek, Petition or Elk Creek Development. I'll move that second. Passes 5-0, 22 is a resolution approving a subdivision improvement installation agreement with Elk Creek Development. I'll move that second. Passes 5-0, 23 is a resolution approving an agreement for maintenance of stormwater detention system with Elk Creek Development. I'll move that second.
Hey, Paul, what's your timeline? I had, I had a citizen ask me on the timeline for like those lots and stuff like that. Do you have a timeline that you've released at all?
As far as sell lots or?
Or, or if someone wanted to buy a lot and build a house, is the?
Can you, can you come up to the microphone, please?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Approximately half the lots are sold. First builder's starting in two weeks.
Okay.
The street went in last week.
Half the lots are sold already?
Excuse me?
Half the lots are sold already?
That's correct.
Good for you.
Thanks.
Name and address, please.
2106 Third Street, Sioux City, 01.
And your name? Thank you.
We just, we get that for the record, Paul.
Paul Koskovich.
I am waiting for, that was one. There it is.
Passes 5-0, State LG Grant and Intensive Downtown Survey.
Larissa Carroll, Community Development, and I'm also the staff liaison for Historic Preservation. So, our interns from the CLG grant and from the Tyson internship grant are coming to the end of their internship. So, as requested, they're here to do a quick presentation for you. So, who I have is Carly Reagan, she's a senior at Morningside College, and Hunter Yarrington, and he is a junior at Morningside College.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us.
Problem, give us your, yep. A little nervous?
You can come over here, sit. Okay. Okay, well, just to say hello again, like Larissa said, I'm Carly Reagan, and I'm a senior at Morningside University now, actually. And I should be graduating in the spring of next year, and I'm studying history and political science.
My name is Hunter Yarrington. I'm gonna be a junior this fall at Morningside, and I plan on graduating in two years. And I'm also a history major with a business minor. So, the goal of our project for the summer calls for an updated historical architectural survey of downtown Sioux City. And with that entails creating historic context for downtown development based on previous historic architectural surveys, city and county histories, and outside research. And so, our role in this project, that was specific to individual buildings within the survey, and that included the compilation of land records, identifying historic photographs, research on historic occupants of these buildings.
Okay. So, previously, the city conducted a survey in 2009 of the entire scope of downtown. Recently, the city has deemed a second and more intensive survey to be done. So, if you look at the maps on the left-hand side, right-hand side of the screen there, this is the actual survey area that we are looking into intensely. So, the original three blocks are bounded on the west side by Water Street, on the east side by Pearl Street, and then the north on Seventh Street, and the south on Fourth Street. And then we have an additional fourth block bound by Pearl to the west, Douglas to the east, Fifth Street to the north, and Fourth Street to the south. So, it's a total of four city blocks, and there are about 35 buildings within the four blocks.
So, the very first building we looked at was the first ever fire station in Sioux City. It was, it's no longer there, but it used to be located at 408 Water Street, and it was built in 1887 by, and designed by the architect E.W. Loft, who is probably most famous for designing the first three corn palaces that were in Sioux City. And a significant person that's tied to this building would be that handsome fellow up there. His name was George Kellogg, and he served as the first ever fire chief for the Sioux City Fire Department. He served like 1889 to 1939, which at the time was the longest tenure for a fire chief in the world. And the building, or the fire station would move to Six and Water in 1924.
Okay. The next building on our survey that we have, most of you probably recognize as work and church bar. It's actually 415 Fourth Street. And this building was originally built in 1902 by gentlemen Joseph Hutterer and Clement Shaftstall, and they were basically looking for a larger building to continue manufacturing cigars. And interestingly, 215 was the, or 415 was the very first building in Sioux City to be built entirely of union labor, and it was awarded a bronze plaque, which has since gone missing, but it was rededicated in 2007, so that hasn't been forgotten quite yet. And then, in 1905, we have this neighboring strip of brick buildings, which now house Bergy's and the Barber Shop and Crash Bang Boom, and other bars of such nature. And since their construction, all of these buildings have usually been home to taverns or bars. And the location of all of the buildings in particular is important. We now see it as across from the Hard Rock, so it's a great party location, more modern, in more modern times. But it was the same in the 1900s when it was constructed, because many of the factory workers would have been coming from across Water Street to come here after work and socialize. And since 1948, there's actually consistently been a tavern in 415 Fourth Street with only one exception in 1990. So, it continues to be the downtown center of Sioux City, I would say.
Next up, we have Bodega 401, located at 401 Pearl Street. And it's, it's interesting, the current bodega spot. And it's, it's interesting, the current bodega spot was also home to a liquor store and a brewery, I believe, of the same name kind of throughout the early nineteen hundreds. And the current building at the spot was built in nineteen forty. And then in twenty sixteen, there would be a bunch of renovations, like the outside spot at Bodega, and then the upstairs bar area was the renovation part. And then the building would then, or the bar would then be opened in twenty sixteen.
Okay, next, right along, uh, Pearl Street there is four oh five Pearl. Um, you probably all recognize it as the Briar and Bow Shop, which has since moved locations in twenty nineteen. Originally, though, four oh five was built in eighteen seventy nine. It says seventy eight on the top of the photo, um, but construction hadn't been completed until January of seventy nine. Um, and interestingly, this building was actually built by a gentleman named George Weir. And George Weir came to Sioux City in eighteen fifty five and opened the first bank in Sioux City. Um, and it was actually just a little office on the second floor of the U.S. Land Office, so he didn't have a building yet. And then in seventy nine, he and his partner John Allison, uh, built the very first story to be at four oh five Pearl. As you can see in the picture on the right side, it is now two stories. Um, and that happened in nineteen oh, nineteen oh nine, uh, with an individual named C.S. Chesterman moved in. He added the second story and extended it all the way back to the alley, so there's another twenty feet added on. And on the left hand side in that photo, um, unfortunately, it's in black and white, so you can't tell. But a lot of the original decoration was done in phoenix stone, um, which wasn't very common for buildings around here at that time. It would have come from Sioux Falls, so it has to be brought in from outside. Um, unfortunately, it's not there, so the building has lost some of its historical integrity. The facade has been redone, but because it was built by such an important member of Sioux City, it's still a significant building.
Um, next up, we start a kind of like a string of bars on Pearl Street, and that starts with the Pats Blue Ribbon Bar on four fifteen. Um, throughout the nineteen forties and then kind of going into the early nineteen sixties, like sixty three, I think, it was known as Nelson and Johnson Hardware Store. And then looking ahead to the nineties and two thousands, the building, the building would be vacant, not really much going on there. And then in twenty eleven, Jitters Donuts operated there. And then in the year twenty thirteen, they relocated to a different spot. I'm not sure the exact address. And then Blue Ribbon Tap would open up there in twenty fourteen. So now we look ahead, right next door at four seventeen, we have Pearl's Wine and Booze. In nineteen forty six, actually, the building would collapse, and that would cause significant damage to four seventeen and four nineteen next door. And they would rebuild the building the next year, nineteen forty seven. And then looking at the nineteen fifties and sixties, there would be many different bars and taverns, all with different names. Usually like anywhere from like three to five years, they would be open there. And then during the nineties, that building would also be vacant, like four fifteen. And then Pearl's Wine and Booze would then open up in twenty eleven.
Okay, so four nineteen Pearl Street, we'll try to keep this one a little shorter. This, uh, most recently was where Earl's Infusion Bar was. Unfortunately, it has since closed. Uh, most important, about four fifteen, or four nineteen, is actually that collapse that you see there on the left side that Hunter mentioned. Um, what happened with the collapse was the roof of four nineteen literally slid off of the top and into four seventeen and ruined both buildings. And Avery Brothers Sign Company was actually at four nineteen for over twenty five years. And so when they rebuilt in forty seven, they only built the buildings to the height of one story. So that's a significant change there. All right, and then if you were to cross the street, uh, to the Malone Building, I'm sure you've all seen it before. It's one of the more memorable buildings of downtown Sioux City. Um, this guy was completed between September and December of eighteen ninety nine, so it's another turn of the century building. Um, and it was built for two grocers, uh, Thomas Malone obviously is the important one. His name is on top of the building, and if you walk outside it, you can still see it today, which is kind of interesting. Um, four, five oh one is most important for its architecture. If you look around the first story, you see that sort of rough stone that you also see outside City Hall. That's very typical of Richard Soney and Romanesque architecture, which would have been popular between eighteen hundred and nineteen hundred. Um, and because the building is so imposing, it's fifty feet across and eighty five feet deep. And because of its important archi, architecture, excuse me, um, it would have come as a huge cosmetic improvement to Pearl Street, which at the time was developing commercially, and so there's bars, barbers, furniture stores, all sorts of going, things going on down there. So this is quite a significant building in terms of archastructure, architecture.
Um, next up, we have the Semansky Building, which was built in nineteen oh five by George Semansky. And the architect for that was a guy by the name of G.W. Burkhead, who also designed the previous building, uh, the Malone Building that Carly talked about. And now this building could be more known for its architectural significance. The main style is a, uh, Richard Soney and Romanesque, which at the time the building was built was kind of going out of style, but they tried to be hip and I guess just keep with it. And then on top there, that white trim, that's called a cornice, and it has some Sullivan type style architectural themes. So that's like a main thing with this building is its architectural significance, I guess.
Okay, and probably the most easily recognizable to some individuals in this room would be six oh one Pearl, um, which is currently home to the old brass rail. Before the building was even there, this lot was actually owned by a gentleman named Lawrence McCarty, and he was an Irish immigrant who, uh, had a lot to do with the commercial development of Pearl Street. And he owned a Catholic bookshop right on that lot there. And then in nineteen twelve, he passes away, and Maurice Fitzgibbon takes over, and he, uh, builds this two-story building, a pressed brick. The architecture in particular isn't that important, however, who lived there and operated there was. Um, so there was a family in Sioux City, the Mandershides, uh, their father was a German immigrant. And Henry Manderscheid operates, um, a cigar manufacturing company out of there. And then, um, they are in charge of beverage distribution, and because, uh, this would have gone up right around the time of prohibition, they would have been mostly selling soft drinks, which is kind of funny. And then, um, uh, Henry Manderscheid's nephew ends up opening the first brass rail in nineteen twenty three, and that's there until nineteen forty four. And then aside from the Mandershides, actually, the most important, uh, part of this building is that the brass rail has been there for so long. It's been there three different times, first, as I said, from nineteen twenty three to nineteen forty four, and then from nineteen fifty four to nineteen sixty four. And the current brass rail has actually been there since nineteen seventy two, making it one of the most continually used historic buildings in Sioux City.
Such a landmark.
And then last, but certainly not least, we have the Launchpad Children's Museum, which is located at six twenty three Pearl Street. Um, basically going back all the way to the nineteen forties, all the way up to the nineties. It served as like various different car dealerships, like there was Solzhenitsky there for a really long time, and then Condon Auto Sales there in the nineteen nineties. And then the current building that holds the museum was actually built in twenty fifteen, after like a long time doing renovations and all kinds of construction projects. And then the Launchpad Museum would also be open that same year in twenty fifteen.
Right, and that concludes our presentation for this evening, so we'd like to turn it back over to council for any questions.
I thought that, on the, the first street, I thought hydraulic sales and service was an old fire station, was it not?
Yeah, it would be there, uh, it's currently there. I think it opened in like nineteen fifty five, I think, fifty four, yeah.
They had that one plus the main one on Sixth and Water?
Well, that's where fire station number one for the city is now. So this is just where the original one was, um, and the building itself is obviously still there, and it looks very much the same. A lot of the dimensions are the same. Hunter and I actually got to go inside that one, and the original buildings from upstairs are the same size. And I think it's also the original floor. Um, and the only big architectural change is that their belfry is gone. But other than that, it's one of the best buildings downtown.
Which one was that one?
This is four oh eight four ten Water Street. It's where hydraulic sales and services is.
So what did you, uh, learn? What was the best part of the internship?
Um, I really liked looking at the fire station, especially, uh, George Kellogg. I got, I got, I got like a kick out of, like, like looking at all the stuff about him. He was a pretty interesting dude.
That's great.
Um, I personally don't know very much about architecture, and so to learn about architecture, maybe that doesn't look so incredible, but is still important for like civic architecture is kind of cool. And especially like, that one building shows two different styles at one time, so it's even more important when you talk about change over time.
Where does all this information go to from here?
Um, our information goes to the consultant that the city has hired, so that he can actually write the more formal, uh, survey of it, which includes historical context that we just contribute to.
Terrific, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carly, Carly and Hunter?
Yeah.
Guys, guys, guys.
I was gonna give you some compliments.
Oh, thank you.
Hunter, no, you did a really great job. It was fascinating, um, to get this information, and you're major in history and in business, and that must really, that must have really helped. You put this project together.
Great experience, yeah.
And the other thing I want to really compliment you on is thank you, thank you, thank you for noticing the city hall outside the exterior.
Quite beautiful.
That was very, uh, that was intentional. And it took a lot of good work from city leadership at that time to, um, push for that. So thank you for noticing.
Question too, because I think both of you, or at least Carly, I think both of you were out there, right, at the Railroad Museum?
Yep, on Thursday, yeah.
Wasn't that pretty cool? Unlike a total aside, the presentation was great. You know you did great. But, um, wasn't that an interesting project as well? I mean, as people that obviously appreciate history, I thought that's gonna be something great coming to our community.
Where are your hometown, what's your hometown?
I'm from Rapid City in South Dakota.
Um, I'm from Clearland, Iowa, being in the southwest corner there.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Are you gonna consider staying in Sioux City?
Uh, I'm not really sure, kind of wherever the word takes me, I guess.
Well, let's see, a major in history and political science, history and minor in business, you know, law school might be your calling.
Try to get a real profession. All right, what do we got next?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Good job, guys.
Ryan Forster, city planner. I'd like to introduce my intern, Aaron Vlasman. He's gonna present on the work he's done this summer regarding our housing inventory study. And I will be available at the end for any questions.
Hello, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the court. Uh, like Ryan said, uh, my name is Aaron Vlasman. Thank you for the time today to discuss the summer twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty one community development internship. Uh, so first, a little bit about me. Um, I had the opportunity to introduce myself to you all at the start of the summer, but I'm a senior at the University of South Dakota, um, studying political science and criminal justice. I'm originally from Watertown, South Dakota, so again, another, uh, South Dakota folk here, um, in Sioux City. And while I haven't lived in Sioux City, um, being, going to school in Vermillion, um, certainly has provided me tons of opportunities to come visit the city, um, do shopping and see all of the events here. Um, and first, before we get into some of the more granular parts of, of the survey and of my work this summer, some of my general reflections was, um, this internship gave me a unique opportunity to have insight into local government, um, especially what it's like to see how a committee functions. You know, you all, uh, the planning and zoning committee, um, and even the historical committee here, um, has been really interesting to see. Secondly, um, this internship has given me firsthand insight into, uh, data skills and, and programming. So, uh, programs like GIS, um, if you're unfamiliar with GIS, basically, it's a program that allows you to design maps. Um, so anytime the city comes before you and shows you a map, um, that's done with GIS. And so it was interesting to use that map making software, um, and learn how to make maps as well as how to analyze the data that was, that's within them. Um, finally, on a little bit of a lighter note, I think I've had quite the character development, um, this summer. I started as, uh, the intern with sore feet, because I wore dress shoes on the first day to survey, uh, over a hundred houses, and I ended as the intern, um, that got bit by a small dog. So, not just, uh, data, but lots of life skills as well.
Yeah.
So to start with GIS, um, this is an example of the first map that I made. Um, I chose South Dakota, uh, because I'm from South Dakota. Um, but this is, as the map explains, South Dakota cities and counties as of twenty sixteen. Um, the blue would be all of the counties that are in South Dakota, and the green would be the cities. Um, if you feel like you can't see the green, that's not a mistake, and there's not a lot of population density in South Dakota. So the real spots you're going to see it is in, uh, the southeastern part of the state like Sioux Falls, or even in the sort of midwestern, not literally midwestern, but middle part of the western side of the state, um, like Spearfish and Rapid City. So now when we look at the program itself, uh, what is the program? It's about an eleven-week program that looked at, uh, two thousand three hundred and seventeen parcels. That's about three percent of, of the buildings in Sioux City. And this was based off of census data that's on distressed communities. So, uh, the map on the right shows you all of the census tract data patterns that we've looked at. We've covered about two and a half of those, um, and they will all be finished by the time, um, it's done. And so what is the goal of this, uh, this program or project? It was first to develop a working data set, um, and so as, right now, we're still collecting some data, and the reports are being finalized. But we're gathering a baseline of commercial and residential building conditions. So I literally go to every single house, um, and look at the roofing, the siding, the windows, the doors, the porch stairs deck ramp, um, and the foundation. And this is an example, um, of Census Track twelve and thirteen that we've completed so far. Um, a map, if you remember on the slide previous, that was the, uh, the part farthest to the right. And then if you look at the legend on the right hand side, so parking is in gray. Um, and then your vacant maintained and vacant not maintained are in sort of that white or clear and black. Um, and essentially what that means, the difference between vacant maintained and vacant not maintained, is if you think about a grass lot, a va, a maintained vacant grass lot would be the, the grass is sort of trimmed down. There's no debris, there's no, um, anything else on that property, whereas a not maintained grass lot would be, um, the, the grass might be overgrown. There is weeds, debris, um, et cetera. And then the, uh, red, yellow, and two shades of green that come after that, uh, are coordinated with the overall score of the property. So red being the poor quality, uh, yellow being the fair quality, so on and so forth. Um, and if you'll notice, the general aspect of this map is there's a lot more sort of poor and fair quality. Um, that's just because of the nature of the, the parcels that we chose to look at. Um, and so this is, uh, essentially the first parts of the overall score out of, out of twenty four total. So then what, what did we learn? Um, I think you can split this up into three categories, commercial, these residential, and then vacant properties. So starting first with commercial, the very top part there, um, is, is a box on the average score, uh, by material of the property. So, um, that would be wood, uh, brick, metal, and stucco. Um, you have fourteen, uh, essentially wood properties, a hundred and thirteen brick properties when you're talking about, um, commercial, and then so on and so forth. And then right below that, um, is a visualization of those same numbers. Um, so if you can see things better with a graph, um, we've included that there. And that's the distribution of the surveyed scores for commercial brick, um, composed properties. You'll see overall here, um, it's good, so it's in that category that's in good to great or above eighteen, all of these commercial properties for brick, which was the, the most surveyed. So then when you look at the two biggest parts, um, brick and wood, again, the top part is sort of all of the numbers, and then the bottom, um, is that same, that same, uh, thing but visualized. So again, we have brick and wood, the wood being in orange, and the brick being in blue. And then again, the thing to highlight here is there's no significant difference between the material of the commercial property. Um, but what there, what is positive to note is the commercial properties surveyed in this study, um, are scoring positively in that good to great category. So then when we look, excuse me, to the residential or the rental be owned, um, I know this was a concern, uh, that the council noted the first time we came forward, uh, with this project, was looking at, what is, is there any sort of difference between properties that are owned or properties that are rented? Um, the top part that you see is the total count of rental and own housing materials. Again, this is that wood, brick, uh, stucco, and vinyl. Once again, uh, wood and brick are the two most popular, with, uh, wood being the most popular at four ninety nine for rentals. And then for owned, it is five thirty two. Uh, looking down to the graph right below that on comparing the aggregate scores of rental and owner occupied properties, um, the owned properties are in orange, and then the rental is in blue. Um, when you look at that excellent category, which is a perfect twenty four out of twenty four, and then the good category, um, owned outscores rental. And then once you look at the fair or the poor categories, which is that seventeen out of fifteen and fourteen and below, uh, rental outscores owned. So essentially what that means is that in the better scoring properties, uh, it is owned, and in the, uh, worse or scoring properties, it is, it is rentals. And so then when you look at the average score, um, out of four, um, of each category for the housing inventory study, um, comparing rental units to owner, um, owner units, um, again, rental is in blue, owned is in orange. You can see the, the most notable places in areas like your doors, your walls, and your front porch. That's where, um, rental properties or the properties in general tend to score worse. So that would be something like, um, your porch stairs deck ramp leading up to the house. You might have, uh, sort of cracked, um, concrete in front, or your, uh, porch on the front might need new boards. And then if it's your walls that's scoring lower, uh, cracked paint, boards missing, uh, so on and so forth. But again, the thing to highlight here is that owned properties tend to score better than the rental properties, both in the aggregate or your, your overall score, and then when you see, look at each specific, uh, material that we looked at. So then finally, what did we learn about vacant classifications? Um, this is the overall, uh, land comp, composition of the housing inventory that we studied. So in the gray, that's parcels with, parcels with structures. That's the commercial and residential that I just talked about. And then the parking in vacant at the six and thirteen percent, um, that is the vacant properties. So then when we compare the maintenance of all vacant classifications, you'll see right away the gray at the bottom, um, is vacant lots that are maintained. Uh, like I talked about, uh, at the very top, if it's a va, uh, maintained vacant lot, be it parking, uh, or, or what, or if it's a maintained grass lot, right, it's trimmed, uh, looks nice, et cetera. And so then when you look at vacant lots that are maintained and vacant And so then when you look at vacant lots that are maintained and vacant lots that are not maintained, you'll see at 18%, that's vacant lots that aren't maintained, and then 28% and 5% is the parking lots that are maintained or parking lots that aren't maintained. The difference between the two, a parking lot that's maintained, it'll have lines drawn, et cetera, so on and so forth. A parking lot that is not maintained, more or less will just be an area that folks seem to be parking their cars with no real guidance. So finally, when you look at maintained versus not maintained vacant properties, you'll see 77% of the properties that we looked at that are vacant are maintained, which is a good sign, but 23% of the properties that we looked at that are not maintained is made up there. And that also includes the percentage of parking lots that are not maintained. So 23% is about a quarter of the lots that we looked at that aren't maintained. It can be somewhat of a cause for concern, because that means that these are, you know, essentially lots laid vacant that folks are either not attending to, or, you know, we don't know who attends to them.
And this is a property or a parking lot?
So the 23% can be either. It can be just sort of...
It's all?
Yep, yep, it is, but it's only ones that aren't maintained. So if there's parking lots included in the 23%, they'd be not maintained, yep. So final conclusions overall, commercial properties tend to score good to excellent. Second, there is a noticeable difference between rental and owned properties sort of across the board. And then finally, a fourth or about 23% of vacant lots are not maintained. With that, I thank you for your time, and any questions from the rest of the council?
I would just say I am surprised about the vacant lots that are maintained, because that's pretty easy to go around and to get a weed ordinance enforced, you know what I mean, or to be able to go around and do that. Some of the other ones, I mean, the red tag process and all of that of actual structures, it's a little more complex and a little more time-consuming and cumbersome, maybe. But I'm surprised with the lots, you know what I mean? Like 25% of the lots, like get someone out there to mow that lot, I guess, but...
Good job, Aaron.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Aaron, were you part of Tyson as well, right? Or no?
I'm not.
You're just an intern, right? Through the program? Great. I heard the guitar. I thought you were going to get up and play.
I should write something about this. Hello, Andrew Velasek, 723 Jones, four and a half years active and sober there. So we have, what's his name, Mid Park, Mid City Park off 801 Court, and there's just, it's just insanity over there. I came in and reported about the people living, because I'm right above the hill from that. It's still off from that, and I just had a neighbor die upstairs, and there's Matthews in the basement, and there's, that park is just a cesspool, and it's right at the doorstep of all the kids, and that the parents have called down to the police station, and the response they get is, it's better than having them downtown, and we just watched that history report where it seemed like that would be a better place for them to be, and opposed at children's doorsteps that haven't done anything. So I don't want to waste my three minutes, so I'd like to hear if I can get some commentary first on this.
What, I'm sorry, I didn't... Mid City Park is just experiencing a lot of problems, and he said that families would call down to the police department, and the responses he was relayed to just said, well, at least they're not downtown.
Eric, can I get a rest of that with the police chief?
If we could just, yeah, check that on, yeah, appreciate it.
Okay, let me make sure I checked everything off. Yeah, just, you know, like I said, I didn't get returned back to from the city senators on like my issues as far as like the smoking concerns, and so that's dwindled down a little bit, because the neighbor upstairs that was selling drugs died, and so it's still going on, craziness in the basement still, but like, and that's, and that's right across from Mercy Hospital. I don't know why, like, this seems like it's like a neighborhood that's just being let, be laid to waste, I mean...
What's happening in your basement?
Well, people just come in there and smoke cigarettes and hang out and get...
Oh, okay, that's with the smoking that you had complained earlier.
Methamphetamines and whatever else, but...
Well, could you talk to your landlord about locking it, so that just people who live there can get in, or no?
Of course I have.
Oh, right.
Ongoing, and I don't know what his excuse is, if he's worn out or just like, you know...
Yeah, it would be nice if it was just...
What's the address?
723 Jones, right across from the Mercy parking lot, far end of it.
723 Jones, sounds like a building inspector needs to go and inspect the property.
It would probably definitely be below 14, excuse me, mayor.
Okay. What else you got?
Lots of things to say, but this is the top foremost thing I'd like to talk about today.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else be heard? Seeing none?
Mr. Greddken.
I just want to mention and offer my sincere sympathies to the death of Mike McCormick, a Sioux City police officer for 39 years. Mike was a great police officer. I worked with him for the majority of his time there and had a lot of talents, but I want to, you know, share that Mike was really a special person, a community policing-oriented individual who really made a difference in the lives of a lot of people, and Mike was struck with cancer and unfortunately passed away late last week, and I want to offer, on behalf of the council, our sympathies to the McCormick family, and they've been big and very active in the community. Dad was a judge, brother was a county attorney for a long time. It's just a very good family, and I'm going to miss him. He was a great guy. And then I just want to mention real quickly, unless Thomas wants to, but the Long Lines family wrecked under parking lot on Saturday, July 31st, Sioux City Household Hazardous Material Collection Event. It's a recycle event from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. There's a list of products that they will take, and it's a good opportunity to get rid of those hazardous materials from your home. And I saw a flyer up at one of the grocery stores on the north side, but I assume it's online?
Yes.
Yep, it's online, and anybody has any information about what are, any questions to ask about what they can get rid of and what they can't? It's just a great opportunity, no expense, at least for this event and however long it lasts, depending upon the extent of the materials that are brought down, but I think it's a really good opportunity. Didn't have one last year because of COVID, and hopefully people will take advantage of that, and that's really all I have.
Really?
Today, I don't have anything.
Alex. I won't let you down.
I know.
Yep. I would just echo the comments that Pete made about Mike McCormick. He was a really great guy. If you ever had the opportunity to interface with him or just have a conversation with him, he was, he was pretty incredible, and it sounds like he has a great family as well, so he'll be missed. The only thing that I wanted to bring to light or share with council was something, I believe an email was sent out, but I just wanted to share it again, and I forget if I had sent it before. But Tyson Interns, those programs, similar to what these students have done through the city of Sioux City, will be hosting an open house. It'll be out at Morningside in the White Shirt Auditorium. It's going to be this Friday, the 30th, from 10:30 to 11:30 a.m.
Is that in the business school?
Sorry?
Is that in the business school?
No, it's actually on the south end of campus, so like there's that new curved building, same parking lot, it's parked in the same parking lot as Grace United Methodist Church, but go to the far west side and park there. It's a square building, but it's upstairs. They'll be doing a poster presentation where they'll talk similarly about this, about their internship, their experience. I believe there are some refreshments and just comments available, but...
That's supposed to be where your office is.
It's right next to my office, yeah. Yep, actually, it's right above it. My office is below, so... But yeah, I just wanted to invite council. I think the internships, I've always been a proponent of internships, but the stuff that they do and the support that Tyson gives and the community gives is incredible, and the impact it's made on the community is really something that can be felt at a lot of these nonprofits. I would invite the media, I'm sure you got releases and stuff on it as well, but it's a great, great program that we need to shine a light on, so that's all I have, mayor.
Dan.
Mayor and council, I attended the Welcome Home of Troops last Friday, which is just a real honor to be part of that. Thank you very much. And it's, if you have occasion to attend one of those ceremonies, when the troops are coming back after 10 months plus...
In August, they're going to have something else.
Another one in August, yeah. They're just really, really, it's just moving to see that with families. And I loved, I loved a lot of the posters that the kids brought for their dads and moms that were coming back from their service, so thank you very much for that. That's all I have.
Who would you...
Second.
Moore.
Aye.
Chaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Greddken.
Aye.